Yeah, I mean, I suppose we could print it out and put it in a blue folder.
We're on. Okay, folks.
Good evening. Welcome to the July 24th meeting of Glendale City Council. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian, Devine, Garpetian, Najarian, Mayor Sinanian.
Here. Today's flag salute will be led by Councilmember Agajanian. Please remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
Please repeat with me or after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. This evening, we pray for our city leaders as they deliberate the issues before them here in Glendale. As our neighbors in Silver Lake recently experienced an act of gun violence and terror, as well as the loss of innocent lives and trauma inflicted upon so many, let us pray for those who are still recovering, those who mourn, and those whose lives have changed because of this incident. Malal Yusuf Zai, the youngest Nobel Laureate and Afghan young girl who was shot and lived to tell her story, has this to say about guns and violence. With guns, you can kill terrorism. With education, you can kill terrorism. With guns, you can kill terrorists, but with education, you can kill terrorism. Malal's words should remind us that we must always aspire to learn and educate ourselves so that we can work towards a society free from violence, free from senseless killing in a community where we can all feel safe. Whether in Glendale or Silver Lake, California, here in the United States, or in Toronto, Canada, or anywhere in the world where those who possess guns feel empowered to take innocent life, we are all bound by the same universal rights we are born with, and we must strive to protect those rights. We pray that our leaders live up to this moment, to do what they must be done to keep our communities safe and prospering. We pray for all this and peace to be restored here and to spread around the world tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Kasarian. May we have the report, please?
Agenda for the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council is postponed on Friday, July 20th, 2018, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. What is next on the agenda?
The presentation and appointments at 3:00 a.m. is a preview for the meetings of Tuesday, July 31st, 2018.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Members of City Council. For July 31st, 2018, Glendale Housing Authority, there are no agendized items. The same afternoon commencing at 3:00 p.m., there'll be a special meeting of the City Council, a special public meeting, and a report from Director of Community Development regarding city vote for the expansion and renewal of the Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District, and also mayor's commendations presented to Cruz Knight 2018 sponsors. The evening commencing at 6:00 p.m., under consent items, report from Director of Community Services and Parks regarding design development and construction documents for Duke Median Park Nature Education Center project, Part Four, Phase Four, Part Three, excuse me. Report from interim Chief Information Officer regarding a request to authorize the purchasing administrator to issue a purchase order for enterprise antivirus protection, security equipment, and related onsite services and software. Lastly, from Fire Chief regarding used old recycling grant and payment program grant application. There'll be an item on the adoption of ordinances, an ordinance adopting the transactions and use tax to be administered by the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, subject to adoption by the electorate. Under action items, Director of Community Development regarding South Glendale Community Plan, including final environmental impact report. Another report from Director of Community Development regarding Armenian-American Museum and Cultural Center of California. Lastly, from Director of Community Development regarding Greater Downtown Glendale Community Benefit District ballot phase. Under hearings, there's a report from Director of Community Development regarding appeal of Design Review Board's approval of DRB case number PDR 1702331 located at 1849 Los Encinos Avenue. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wallanyan. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Next item is the proclamation designing July 30th, 2018 as Korean Comfort Women Day.
And we have Chang Lee and the council, and Monica from South Korea, and Anaito Shakun.
Good evening, Mayor, and the council members and the city staff. Thank you very much from the bottom of our heart that the city of Glendale is in the forefront of preserving the dignity of human rights and those that we have suffered during the atrocities in the history. Comfort Women is one of those dark moments in the history during the World War II, and the city of Glendale has memorized with a peace statue honoring those victims and continued to commemorate the Comfort Women Day. And, you know, I'm proud to be a Glendalean, that the city of Glendale, you know, is the only city really commemorates this year after year. So, again, thank you very much. And we have, you know, artists that, who are here from four different countries, that's being exhibited in the Central Library. We have curators from our own city, City of Glendale Library, and then also from Korea, Monica, who brings this wonderful art. And it starts from this Saturday, July 28th, in Central Library, displayed in Reflex Space and also throughout the library. And also outside of the library, there's a big posters that's going to be posted honoring to Comfort Women, her monies, the grandmas. During this time, you know, the education is a key to educate the young people and also those people, Glendaleans, to learn more about this history. And also that the history does not repeat to prosecute and to violate the human rights of these women. So, I'd like to invite everybody to come out. The Saturday, we have a commemoration event on the second floor in the library, in the auditorium, where we have the cultural event and also commemoration event. We have Mike Honda, former congressman, Judy Chu, current Congresswoman, and obviously, I expect council members and the mayor to be there. And also former councilman Frank Ontario would be there. So, there'll be many people that who will be joining us to celebrate or commemorate this event with us. So, we do have a poster that, you know, promotes this event. And again, this starts from July 28th and lasts till September 11th. This is about six weeks displayed. So, I'd like to invite all Glendaleans to come by Glendale Central Library to look at the artwork that depicts the history, the past history, and honors the Comfort Women. You want to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Sinanian, members of council and city staff. I don't want to repeat what Chang said, but it is very important in keeping with the theme of Reflex Space, we exhibit works of art and artifacts and history of injustices in the world. And this is the Korean Comfort Women commemoration. So, in conjunction with the Comfort Women Day, we have this really wonderful exhibit that brings together not only American artists, Armenian-American artists. Ara Oshagan, my husband and co-curator, was fortunate enough to be invited to Korea. He was in Seoul documenting, and his photography will be on display along with a Dutch artist, Jan Banning. We have Rose Pritchett, who was also not Korean and American. We have various artists that will be on display, very famous Korean artists who are in permanent collections in Netherlands. So, there are a number of profound and important artists that will be on exhibit. And as you mentioned, we have ribbon cutting and opening of the exhibit this Saturday from 5:00. There's a commemorative event as well as a ribbon cutting down at Reflex Space following the commemorative events in the auditorium. So, I welcome and urge everyone's attendance. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to also introduce our friends, North Los Angeles Korean-American Federation. You know, they are, they've always supported this event, and, you know, they're your constituents. And, you know, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the executive members of the Korean-American Federation. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um...
Oh, I'm sorry. You do have the important stuff.
Of course. And just as you're proud to be a Glendalean, we're also proud to commemorate the memory of Comfort Women every year. And we're unique, you're right, because I don't know if we're the only one, but we're certainly one of maybe one or two, two or three, right?
Two.
There's one on the east coast.
Claim, Korean, Comfort Women Day is the only city.
We're the only city. Okay, so we're very special in that case. But, that's Glendale. That's Glendale, and we're proud to be Glendaleans, and we're proud to know for a fact that all peoples that have been persecuted will have their stories told, their stories exhibited, their memory honored in the city of Glendale. I think that's sort of the brand that we have out there, and we're going to make sure that it persists. Because fortunately, or unfortunately, a large proportion of the population of Glendale is composed of peoples that have undergone horrible crimes that have been committed against them. And as a result, in order to prevent those crimes from occurring in the future, we honor the memory of the victims of such crimes. And we're going to do that this year, again, end of July. That's a tradition at this point. And July 30th will be Comfort Women Day. And I'm going to read this proclamation into the record, and then I'll come down and give it to you. Whereas during the colonial and wartime occupation of Asia and the Pacific Islands from the 1930s through the duration of World War II, the Japanese Imperial Army commissioned the acquisition of young girls who became known to the world as Comfort Women. And whereas the Comfort Women system of forced military prostitution by the Imperial Army is considered one of the largest cases of human trafficking in the 20th century. And whereas the city of Glendale commends the United States Congress, House of Representatives for the passage of Resolution 121, and joins with their recommendation that the government of Japan should educate current and future generations about this horrible crime while following the recommendations of the International Committee with respect to the Comfort Women. And whereas the city of Glendale has a longstanding history of recognizing cultural diversity and has been a strong advocate of human rights around the world, this was evident in 2013 when the Glendale City Council voted to approve the Comfort Women Monument in the Glendale Central Park. Since the decision was made, the city of Glendale has continued to support the efforts to secure the rights of those known as Comfort Women. Now therefore, I, Zara Sinanian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim July 30th, 2018 as Korean Comfort Women Day, and extend our profound hope that bringing these atrocities to light will serve as a grave reminder to the world that crimes against humanity will not be condoned or tolerated. Thank you. Can we, colleagues, if you don't mind?
Oh, I was trying to photobomb that.
I don't know if my colleagues want to add anything to that. At least, well, at least, Councilwoman Najarian was one of the people who voted for the first Korean Comfort Women Day. He also voted on the, along with me, voted on the monument, the placement of the monument.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You really said it all. We, we take crimes against humanity seriously in Glendale. There are things that will not be forgotten in this city. And when the opportunity to dedicate a day and to erect a monument arises, we certainly are not afraid to step up against some pressure and doing that. So, look forward to seeing everyone on Saturday.
Well, I had a small part in this. I was on the commission of the status of women when this topic issue arose and was happy to support it, proud to support it. And it's always wonderful each year to honor these women that, that paid the price, an ultimate price. And I'm proud to be a Glendalean and part of this Comfort Women movement. Thank you.
I think it's great that we recognize the suffering of Korean people, and hopefully this we're not going to see anywhere in the world.
Thank you. Okay, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next item and see everyone on Saturday. Next item is item 3C.
3C is appointment of Boarding Commission member. This was a nomination by Councilmember Najarian. It is for Suzanne Brusalian to the Commission on the Status of Women.
Do we have a motion? Do you want to make a comment?
No, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, I would like to thank my current Commissioner, Sedekho Jayan, for her years of dedicated work to the Commission on the Status of Women. And I welcome and move the newest member, Susan Brusalian, who is a local businesswoman and a very involved community member, and wish her the very best of success in her tenure on the Commission.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is items including minutes. Following a routine, may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Anyone like to pull an item?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian? Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, City Council staff comments.
What was I going to say?
I have, I have comments until, until...
I'll just say that Cruz Knight was fantastic. So, thank you to Community Services and Parks, and I guess we'll be giving them recognition next week.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, please. No, go ahead.
As you know, last week, we discussed to raise the taxes, local taxes, from nine and a half percent to 10 and 1/4 of percent. I agreed to it, and I'm hoping that this will be used for the benefit of the public. Of course, they're going to say anything we will do is for benefit of the public, but, you know, bureaucrats, they know how to use the money. So, so I'm hoping again that the money will be mostly allocated to affordable housing. For weeks, here we have group of people, they come here and they are asking for rent control. And the reason being is the rents went through the roof. And it's very hard for families to stay in this city. Longtime residents of Glendale are leaving the city because they can't afford. And this, if we use the taxes, tax dollars which we are raising for the benefit of making the affordable housing, then the pressure will be less on the general public, and they don't have to come every week and ask us to do something about it. So, still, to those who are here, they are, they have all the rights to do whatever they want, but I'm sure affordable housing will help beside some limitation on the rent which they are seeking for that will be voted probably in the future. But again, I'm hoping these tax dollars which we are raising to be allocated mostly to affordable housing and nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agajanian. And I will also add on to Councilmember Devine's praises of the Cruz Knight. It was a resounding success, the biggest one yet. We had 337 registered classic cars on display, and there were some very, very special cars that we hadn't seen in the past. We had gathered $36,000 in sponsorships for the event, $12,000 in car registrations. And we had a 14-member committee from eight city departments putting the event together starting in December of last year. And we're going to have the winners of this year's awards at our next Tuesday meeting. So, we can, I guess we're going to honor them for bringing their cars, displaying their cars, and having won the awards. And also, next, for next meeting, I'd like to nominate Savannah Zadorian as the Arts and Cultures Commissioner, and also Stefan Drakjin for Planning Commissioner. And that's all I have today. Yes, Mr. Najarian?
I did recall, next Monday at 11:00 a.m. in the Police Community Room, I will be hosting a transportation discussion, broad-ranging. We will have, and this is a quarterly meeting that is held, this quarter, it's going to be in Glendale. So, those of you who are transportation policy wonks, who want to get some of the latest information from MetroLink, from Metro, Caltrans, LA County Public Works, please, you're all invited. Mr. Mayor, special invitation to you and all the councilmen and council members as well. It should be an interesting meeting, and you can ask really any question from the very top staff people that are there. And one more item to be filed under the category of be careful what you ask for. The good news is, the bright pink van advertising topless maid service is gone. However, it has been replaced with a bright red van promoting attorney services. So, I'm not sure which is, which is more offensive to, to everyone. But, anyway, that's, that's the way it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we make sure that the transportation presentation is on council's calendar, those who want to attend? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one comment from staff?
Please, go ahead.
I know I've had a chance to introduce all of you to our new Assistant Director of Community Development, but I'd like to introduce them to the community. Bradley Calvert is the new Assistant Director, CDD, will be overseeing planning. Bradley comes to us from Bellevue, Washington, but he really has a rounded background in planning. His education is architecture. He has served as a planner, a transit planner, in the city of Atlanta, and recently in Bellevue, did some urban design and more current planning. So, very well-rounded. We're happy to have him join us. And first assignment will be the DSP review that you would ask for.
Very well. Welcome. I've already welcomed you in person, but welcome. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item on the agenda is community event announcements, the three-minute portion of our oral communication, so to speak. That's been reserved for community events. And for those who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda but wish to limit their time to three minutes instead of the five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. For community events announcement, I have one card submitted by Jane Patel.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Sinanian. My name is Jane Patel, and I'm with the Glendale Environmental Coalition. I have a brief announcement about a community meeting that we're holding tomorrow night. The meeting will introduce an exciting proposal we're supporting called a residential virtual power plant. A virtual power plant is a large number of homes outfitted with rooftop solar and high-capacity batteries that are then networked together to mimic a power plant. By participating in the program, residents would not... By participating in the program, residents would not only be generating power for their own homes, but they could help the city by storing backup power in their batteries to send back to GWP when demand is high, like it was a couple of weeks ago and probably is today. With enough participation, this could reduce the need to build a new gas plant. It's even sophisticated enough to target power to specific points in the grid and prevent the kind of local blackouts we saw a couple of weeks ago. And if there's an outage anyway, residents with a battery would at least be able to keep their lights on and keep critical devices going. This could be especially important for elderly residents and residents with small children. It's really a triple win. People can save money by generating their own energy, sleep better knowing they can avoid losing all power in the case of an outage, and prevent the city from having to spend hundreds of millions of dollars on a gas plant. Here are the details for the meeting. The community meeting on the VPP will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, July 25th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Glendale Fire Station 21, 421 Oak Street, second floor, Glendale 91204. And that's across the street from the Glendale Galleria parking structure where members, meeting members can park as well. If interested residents are not able to make the meeting, they can find out more and sign up for updates on the VPP proposal by going to cleanenergyglendale.org/virtual-power-plant. Council is welcome to join us. We'd love to have you there. This could be a great solution for replacing plans to expand the Glendale Grayson Gas Plant, which would most certainly further pollute our air. As recently as last April, L.A. County was ranked as having the worst air quality in the nation. Together, we can make Glendale a clean energy leader and truly fulfill the city's byline description on the government website. Glendale, a breath of fresh air. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patel. And now we have the three-minute public comment cards, starting with Jennifer Pinkerton, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Jennifer Pinkerton. Thank you for bearing with us. That's an example of some work we've been doing as the Glendale Environmental Coalition, really a labor of love because we and community members are very intent on helping the city make a successful transition to clean energy. This map is a product of many hours of taking screenshots of satellite images and putting them together, the purpose of which was to identify large rooftops, parking lots, and other open spaces that might be suitable for solar power installation. The pink, you'll notice there are some areas that are highlighted. Pink areas show large parking lots and parking structures, and the yellow on there signifies large rooftops. In addition to the map, we're also compiling a database about these properties, owners' names, contact information, the types of businesses or facilities that these are. Are they health facilities, for example, that should always have power on? Or are there facilities such as churches where they have lower occupancy or episodic occupancy that's lower? We've also been identifying existing solar projects throughout the city that we think can serve as a model to other businesses and facilities. These include spaces such as the building that houses All West Nursing Services, the Glendale Galleria, Temple Sinai, Extra Space Storage, Franklin Elementary School, and there's several field shade structures also, such as one at Toll Middle School, Pacific Auto Sales Center, and Pacific BMW. Now, our plan is to share this map and the database that we're developing with developers who are going to be bidding on clean energy projects here in Glendale, specifically solar. This map is just one piece, of course, of the whole city, but it is one example of how the Glendale Environmental Coalition could be working with the city and GWP to make this a very successful clean energy RFP. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, if I may, I just want to commend you for the amount of work that must have taken and the hours. Amazing. Wow, geez.
Thank you. Tony Passarella, followed by Haik Mahmudian.
Good evening, Mayor Sinanian, councilmembers, staff, and public. My name is Tony Passarella. I'm a 31-year resident of the city of Glendale. Paula Devine got an email from Glendale, longtime Glendale resident, in regards to a traffic incident on Royal not that long ago. You recall that? So Paula Devine took immediate action, responded to the email promptly, and soon after was one of those portable blinking slowdown signs. Responded immediately. Well, last year, I talked about on Pacific, which is like a drag strip, and you all know this. The whole city knows from the 134 to Broadway is basically a drag strip. There's no speeding limit signs, there's no caution signs, there's no banners like you're putting up around the city, which are really nice. So I, I'm curious as to why that little incident was responded to so quickly. And what I'm bringing to your attention, that has been known, again, for many, many years, and I talked about it last year, and I emailed all the council members, and I got this response from seven paragraphs from Eva, no, Eliza Papazian. I don't know exactly, you know, who she is, but she talks about all the data, I'm just going to highlight some of this, all the data is reviewed and analyzed, predictive modeling, policing, the area on Pacific is not included in the high collision. Well, is Royal in the high collision? So I'm really confused by all of this. However, the officers are still conducting significant enforcement in that stretch of highway. Well, I know that for a fact because in the last incident, I stopped one of the motorbike officers, and I said, what's happening here? How come nothing is done here? And he happened to know me, and he says, Tony, he says, he says, listen, I write tickets till my fingers are numb on the street. I says, bingo. So there it is. I mean, is this all lip service here? You know, talking about the, the staff is all working on issuing in order to install speed radar feedback signs in each direction on Pacific? I know this, I haven't got, this was June 5th, but is it a revenue stream? I mean, is that why for all of these years, nothing has been on that stretch? It's just curious to me. So I would appreciate if something could be expedited in this regard. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any response from staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'm not sure why there was an inference made regarding a request being made by a council member, and the inference being that that may have been handled differently than a request being made from a member of the community. We treat all requests depending on the priority of that request first and foremost, in a manner that we believe to be the most expedited and expedient manner. I will ask if you will bear with me for just a minute, since we do have the chief in the audience. Where is he? If you can come on up, Chief Povolitis, to give a brief overview of the item that Mr. Passarella has brought up, because staff has spent considerable amount of time regarding the issues that he has brought forward. And Eliza Papazian's note response to Mr. Passarella, in no way is lip service. It's what we have looked at, studied, and in our professional opinion, we may not be in agreement with Mr. Passarella in terms of what he wants done. So with that call, if you can give a brief history and overview of what he is referring to.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Carl Povolitis, police chief. What Eliza did give to Mr. Passarella is sort of a thumbnail outline of exactly how we approach traffic enforcement. And I think we've talked to you over decades, I think, talking about engineering enforcement and education as being three of the major components on how we address traffic collisions. We literally do look at traffic collision maps, predictive modeling, taking into account complaints from the members of our communities in how to deploy our resources. Right now, our modeling would show that the collisions actually tend to move off of Pacific a little bit and more into our downtown area, but that's it. But we do not ignore any particular area of the city, no matter where it comes from. And just to give you a sense of what that was, we actually looked at about a 17-month period, we had 35 traffic collisions on that stretch of Pacific between basically the 134 freeway and Broadway. So that averages out to two a month. At the same, in that same time period, we made over 300 enforcement stops on there. And that is the enforcement part of, you know, working on people to change their driving behavior. And then we routinely work with traffic engineering to post signs where they are appropriate without interfering with traffic. And sometimes when you get onto heavy-volume streets and narrow lanes, if we go put one of our larger signs up, there is no place to put it without adversely impacting a significant traffic lane. So we take this very seriously. We issue citations, we issue warnings, and we provide enforcement activity, and that is one of the places that we have and continue to work on.
Okay, thank you. Haik Mahmudian, followed by Dan Brotman.
Hello, folks.
Hello.
So, good evening. I have had a few things that I wanted to share, but I feel like I like this as a dialogue more, and I heard a couple of things earlier in the conversation that allude to what we are trying to have happen in Glendale, to ask you to adopt in Glendale, which is to have rent control. And two things that stood out to me today during other people's speeches. First of all, also, I will be saying a couple of things in Armenian to make sure that we are, that folks who are Armenian speakers in the audience also understand. One thing that I wanted to bring up is that you mentioned that Glendale is a city that takes crimes against humanity very seriously. I think that's a very important stand to be taking as a city. And what came to mind is a very recent report by U.N. Council on Human Rights and Poverty. And it's a long report, I'm not going to be able to read all of it, but I want to read one piece of it, which I think is very relevant here. And it says, there's no magic recipe for eliminating extreme poverty and poverty in the United States, and each level of government must make its own good-faith decisions. But at the end of the day, particularly in a rich country like the USA, the persistence of poverty is a political choice made by those in power. With political will, it could readily be eliminated. This is, I think, directly connected to what stands politically as folks who are elected by city, by the city, you politically can take what stands as it relates to humanity, as it relates to violence against humanity. That's one piece. The other piece is, I really appreciate Councilmember Agajanian's advocacy for affordable housing and recognition of rent control as an important issue, and us coming out. I just want to reiterate that rent control addresses what you so rightly mentioned is happening in our city now, while affordable housing addresses those things later while those buildings are being built. I think we absolutely should be talking about serious, deep affordable housing in Glendale, but we, again, we want to be addressing the issue now, and rent control is the answer. I'd like to invite all members of the audience to join us outside as we organize for rent control in Glendale. After the last announcement, after Dan makes his announcement, we're going to all come out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, can I make a comment?
Yes, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
It was brought to my attention today in a meeting that this council feels that renters are lesser people than those of us that own homes, that you are not as good as we are. And I just want to let you know, for myself, that you are just as important to me as every other citizen in this city. I hear you, I care about you, you are no less than anyone else. You are just as important. I just wanted to let you know that.
You're going to support rent control, I assume?
I didn't say that. I just, I'm telling them that I...
Okay, just want to make sure that we have clarity on that. Because, of course, they're appreciated. Of course, we love them. Of course, we care for them. I think they're asking for specific action by this council. And it's nice to say these things, you know, I support affordable housing. Who doesn't? It's nice to say how much we love and respect and value them. How could we not? They're asking for rent control. Rent control. And anything short of that is really, you know, niceties. It's, we're saying nice things. We're not doing that one thing that they're asking for. So just bringing things back to, into focus.
But Mayor, I just wanted, as I said, it was brought to my attention that they felt that we don't, that we think that they are lesser, and I just want them to know that we don't. I don't. I don't. Has nothing to do with rent control, it's simply the impression that I want them to have of what I feel. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Saying that, of course, we want and not to act is two different issues. We have reserve account. Why we don't tap to that reserve account and make more affordable housing? So I know affordable housing is very different than rent control. Rent control is, they're asking for a specific action now. Affordable housing is for the future, as has been mentioned by the gentleman who was here. But this city council can, they have the power to allocate more money toward affordable housing, even if it's three years later, two years later, that will lessen the problem that we have in this city. That's why just saying we are in favor of it and no action is not going to help anybody.
I mean, we can, if, we can put that issue on the agenda and discuss it, whether using cities' reserves that are for, truly their reserves, they're meant to be used in emergency situations when there's economic collapse, recession, when we're, we can't generate funds.
Natural disasters.
Natural disasters, you know, when God, you know, God knows what happens with certain lawsuits and you have to plug holes. That's what reserves are for. So if we want to, you know, engage in the discussion of whether taking the reserves out and actually using it for rent, for affordable housing is a responsible thing to do, and I mean, we can do that. Or we can, we just, we just, we just voted to put a measure on the ballot which would allow us to keep our own tax funds in Glendale and perhaps use those funds for affordable housing. I mean, that, that would be a more laudable and responsible way, I think, to use funds for affordable housing. But just, those are my thoughts. I don't know.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Right now, it's like natural disaster. There was a gentleman I met, he was living in one of these, I don't want to give the address, it's 43 apartment building. He was living there with two little kids, and he was paying 1425. And I was trying, I tried to reach the landlord, but obviously, we can't say anything as a friendly advice. His rent from 1425 went to 2600. I mean, this is something that's happening. This is kind of a disaster too. How they can afford, if you double the rent, how they can afford it? So that's why the only thing I'm seeing, whether it's rent control, so we are against the rent control because there will be rundown apartments or bad apartments because the rent is controlled. Then the other choice is to create affordable housing, to lessen the problem. If we are just saying we have, we have 600, 700 million in the account for future, if some sort of disaster will happen, this is the disaster which happened now.
So this, this is devolving into a... So this, this is devolving into a debate, a debate which is not allowed. We can put this on the agenda, we can discuss it, but it has to be agendized first.
Correct, Mr. Mayor.
We need, what do we need? We need two, two people to-
Two members.
Yeah, two members.
What's, exactly, what are we saying that we spend? The issue is, should we spend our city reserves on creating affordable housing?
Yes.
I'm not saying the entire money, which you have in the account, but some portion of it allocated for this purpose. Why we don't allocate $100 million, at least two, three years later than the rule?
How much is our reserve?
I'm, I'm trying to remember exactly, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council.
How much is our reserve?
We have about 50 to 60 million dollars in our reserves. And as you know, you have implemented a policy to bring down those reserves to a floor of 25 percent with a high of 35 percent, based on the fact of, of the 115 trust and the investments that you're making within that trust to pay off debt in the future as it relates to pension liability costs. Putting that aside, your reserves are there, as you said, for the purposes of a time where those reserves are needed to run the City of Glendale operations. And what level of, of reserves are, are healthy reserves and good reserves to have for a municipality the size of the City of Glendale? And in the research that we have done, the floor of 20 percent seems to be the floor that municipalities that are of our size are comfortable with, nothing lower than that. And, and we went, and Glendale's been conservative, as you know, throughout the years, we went to a floor of 25 percent, and, and that's pushing it for the City of Glendale and our reserves. And you have to also look at, and I'm sorry, Christine Godinez, we're gonna wrap this up here. You have to look at where your revenues do come from. And our revenue sources aren't as diversified as we would want them to be for the allowance to be able to, to spend down reserves. And again, we can always have the discussion if, if the council so chooses, but cautioning you in terms of where possibly that conversation may, may go. And so, just wanted to, to give that information, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So I'm not hearing a second on this discussion. We'll move on to the next speaker, Dan Brotman.
Hi, good evening. I'm gonna cover a little bit of the, of the same ground I talked about last week, which is how much power Glendale actually needs once we shut down the old Grayson. I mentioned that the Clean Energy RFP is looking to obtain 235 megawatts of additional capacity. That's broken into two parts. One is 65 megawatts, and that's to meet our peak need. And the other is 170 megawatts, which is what we call planning reserves or contingency. Okay? So it's important to keep those two separate. The 65 megawatts is basically what's to address what we call the 500-hour problem. You've heard this before. If we were to just take the capacity that we have today without Grayson, we'd have enough power to run the city on all but 500 hours of the year. Okay? It's actually a little less than 500 hours, based on GWP load data, but we're rounding up. In any case, 65 megawatts kind of plugs that shortfall. Of course, the 65 megawatts does not need to be all new generation. It could well be from using energy efficiency, it could be from demand management, and other things that bring that peak down that give us the 500-hour problem in the first place. This would be substantially cheaper than building new gas generation, probably about 20 percent of the cost. So hopefully, we'll see some decent proposals through the RFP on that side of things. The bigger nut to crack is this contingency reserves problem. I explained last week that GWP's position on N minus one minus one is not supported in any FERC or BOSSA language. It just doesn't exist. Okay? It's not that N minus one minus one is a made-up concept, it's just that it's not a rule Glendale is bound to. I won't go through the whole argument I made last week, but the right number's probably around what the BOSSA requires of us, which is 80 megawatts, which we can self-supply or we can get it straight from LEDWP if we want. Anything beyond that should require rigorous cost-benefit analysis. What's the likelihood of ever needing more than 80 megawatts of reserves? And what's the cost if we need to fall back on LEDWP for any shortfalls that we have? And then compare that to the cost of building and maintaining additional capacity locally. We haven't seen any such analysis. Okay? The upshot is that unless we have more information, the real number for Glendale is probably around 145 megawatts, not 235 megawatts. Please keep this in mind, and don't blindly accept broad statements about regulatory or contractual requirements that can't be supported. Thank you.
If I may, I just wanna let Mr. Brotman know that I've asked some of these questions and concerning LEDWP selling us electricity or power. They refused three times last week, weekend, when we were in a, a crisis. We asked them, our staff asked three times if we could buy from them, and they refused. No, no, and no.
It's in the contract.
Sorry.
Okay. That's the last, thank you, Councilmember Devine. Thank you, Mr. Brotman. That's the last speaking card. Let's move on to the next item.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we do have a public hearing, if you want to hear that before the action items. It's entirely up to your-
Sorry?
Public hearing on weed abatement. Would you like to hear that before?
Uh, we, wow. Oh. Item 8B, is that correct?
9A.
9A? Okay, yes, 9A. We do not have speaker cards, and I know Chief Fish is here, I'm sure.
Yes.
Well, chief is here, I'll open the public hearing.
Allow me to read into record. 9A is a fire chief regarding weed abatement charges for fiscal year 27, 2018. 9A1 is resolution confirming weed abatement charges.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. My, my colleagues have a question for the chief. I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Move the item.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonanian?
Yes. Thank you. On to the next item.
Returning to action items, ADA City Manager regarding Adoptee Citizenship Act of 2018, S2522 by Senator Blunt, and HR 5233 by Representative Smith. A1 is resolution of support.
Yes.
We'll go directly to Ms. Powers.
Good evening, Mayor Sonanian, members of council. Before you, for your consideration, is the Adoptee Citizenship Act of 2018. This is federal legislation that would provide US citizenship to individuals born outside of the United States who were adopted as children by American citizens. This bill was introduced earlier this year in March of 2018 by both Democratic and Republican members of the US Senate and the US House of Representatives. So it is a bipartisan bill. There is an equal number of Democrats and Republicans on both sides of this bill. And it would fix a loophole that denies some adoptees the right to citizenship. So back in 2000, the Child Citizenship Act was passed, and this allowed automatic citizenship to qualifying adoptees born outside of the US who were under the age of the, under age of 18. It did not apply to adoptees who were over the age of 18 when the law went into effect in February of 2001. So as a result, we now have about 35,000 estimated adoptees who were legally adopted by US citizens who are now adults, and they don't have citizenship. Many of these adoptees live in the US, they're susceptible to deportation, and they're unable to travel outside of the US, and they're unable to work legally. So this bill would grant, and not, so sorry, this bill would grant an adoptee born outside of the US who was adopted by a US citizen parent, automatic US citizenship if they were adopted as children, if they were physically present in the US in legal custody of US citizen parents, they've never attempted to acquire US citizenship before, and they reside in the US on the date of enactment of this bill. They've tried over several sessions to pass this bill, and they've been unsuccessful, so they're gonna keep trying to pass this bill.
What is the impediment to passing the bill?
I'm not quite sure. I know that this year, there's just, on the House of Representatives side, they said they've, they're so bogged down with immigration issues that they likely won't hear this bill this year. It doesn't mean that advocates of adopting won't be pursuing this over and over again. It seems to have support on both sides, so they'll keep trying.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
I, I have a comment. I, I just wanna make clear that adoptees who are adults now, and before they are granted citizenship, there will be background checks for criminal activity and deportable offenses before they are granted the citizenship.
Yes. If they're living outside of the United States, they will be doing background checks before they're allowed entry and allowed any sort of citizenship. I believe for those who are residing in the United States, they will be given the opportunity to have citizenship, unless there is some major issue.
Right. They do, okay. Thank you.
Right. Those with felonies will not be able to exercise this right, one way or another. Right?
That's my, that's my understanding, yes.
I do have a speaker card from Mr. Chang Lee. How much time do you need, Mr. Chang?
I'll be speaking on this issue a little bit, and then I'll be introducing a very important person, so-
Okay.
Let me first-
How much time do you need, though?
For me, one minute, and then for-
You have four minutes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, as the staff wonderfully reported, this is a really loophole in the system where these people that, who were adopted at very young age, so all they know is how to speak English, and they really don't know any other cultures, they are Americans. But because of the system loophole, they are, failure of the other parents actually, you know, making them legal citizens here, they are now here, adults, living here, without any country to speak of. And some of these people that who's been deported back to their country, their country will not accept them. So there, these people are not, you know, they do not have any country to speak of, and they speak English. And they are familiar with all the customs and cultures that's here in America. The, on this issue, I'd like to bring up our Deputy Counsel General from Republic of Korea, who has been working on this issue for many years, and, and also continued to, to work on this. There is a House resolution that's being introduced, that's being worked on. City of Los Angeles already has adopted resolution on this issue. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Mr. Honorable Mr. In Sang Hwang, who's a Deputy Counsel General of Republic of Korea.
Welcome, Mr. Hwang.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the council members, and my fellow Glendaleans. I got a new word. Firstly, on behalf of my government, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about humanitarian issue. As you know well, I mean, this is CCA, the Citizen, I mean, Child Citizenship Act, only applies to adoptees who are under age of 18, when the law entered into force in 2001. As he said, the loophole denies citizenship to adoptees of age of 18 or over as of 2001, regardless of the fact that they were legally adopted by the US citizens and raised in the United States. This loophole left tens of thousands of US international adoptees in very vulnerable situation. I'll give you an example. Mr. Philip Kray was a 42-year-old deported Korean male adoptee. He came to the United States 1983, adopted by a family in Pennsylvania, but he never became a US citizen because his adoptive parents did not apply for his citizenship. Mr. Kray grew up as an American, but, but his identity was denied at one moment, and he lost everything in his life, including his family and friends. In May last year, he committed suicide in his country of birth, South Korea. Mr. Kray's case reminds us of the risks and challenges faced by international adoptees who are raised on American soil but not granted rightful citizenship. I'm sure this newly introduced ACA bill will fix this problem by granting international adoptees US citizenship unless they have been found guilty of a violent crime and have been deported. This bill will positively impact tens of thousands of international adoptees, including several thousand from Korea like Mr. Kray, by granting citizenship they should have had in the first place and fostering stability in their lives and communities. I sincerely hope the great City of Glendale will support this Adoptee Citizen Act of 2018, so that all the international adoptees are treated equally under US law by closing these loopholes in the current CCA. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Counsel General.
I'll move the item.
Oh. And we have a second. We'll take roll call unless Mr. Najarian has anything to say. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Agajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpadian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonanian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Can we, you know, this is a historical moment, so can we take a photo here?
Of course. Where do you wanna take the photo?
Right here, yeah. Thank you.
Counsel, join me?
No, I just wanna remind you, this is not limited to just Korean-Americans, but it's for everybody.
Of course.
Yeah.
And we're just supporting it. We haven't passed that law yet, though.
Yeah, we understand. But-
Mayor? Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
8B is Fire Chief Regarding Payment for Aircraft and Firefighting Services Performed by the City of Los Angeles and United States Department of Agriculture Forest Service in response to September 1st, 2017 to September 10th, 2017, Latuna Canyon Fire. At B1 is resolution authorizing the City Manager to appropriate funds to cover costs related to the Latuna Canyon Fire. Mr. Mayor and Council, I should note and read into the record also that there is a revised resolution of appropriation that corrected a typo that was in the original document. The correct amount is $139,416.06. Everyone has received that revised document for your consideration.
Very well. Thank you. Good evening, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, if you remember about a year ago, on September 1st, a very fast-moving brush fire broke out in the City of Los Angeles on the Tuna Canyon Road. And it burned ferociously for at least two or three days, and it started to creep into the Glendale city limits. As, as hard as we worked to stop that, and I have Chief Lynch with me as well, he was the incident commander representing Glendale in the unified command with the City of Los Angeles and with the City of Burbank. We did everything we could to keep it out of the city limits. Unfortunately, that was not to be. We did end up burning close to 7,200 acres on that fire, of which 450 of those acres were in the City of Glendale. It was my direction to Chief Lynch as the incident commander to make sure that everything that burned in the City of Glendale was west of the drain line. In other words, should the drain line east burn, there would have created a tremendous amount of mudslides potentially with the winter rains. That did not occur. The other, the other caveat that was given to the incident commander, Chief Lynch, at the time was to make sure that we used our resources commensurate with the values at risk. And that's one of the objectives every time you have an incident in the wildland. We always wanna make sure we spend our money wisely. So what we did was, we, we employed the resources from the United States Forest Service, California Cal Fire. We also used LA County Resources rotor wing and LA City rotor wing to make sure that the fire didn't get west of that, east of that ridge. And it was successful. When we came back, through a fantastic relationship that we had with our friends from LA County Fire Department and Cal Fire, we were not billed by those agencies. We were billed, however, by the USDA Forest Service and by the City of Los Angeles. And that was to the tune, just for the air resources for that fire, it was $2.3 million. million dollars. We are being, through an agreement that we created through the Los Angeles Fire Chief, Burbank Fire Chief, and myself, we agreed that we would pay based on the percentage of the acreage was involved. And so for us, that is six percent, and that, that number comes out to a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars and six cents. So it is, is request, I'm respectfully requesting that we pay that money to the city of Los Angeles, because they have been billed by the USDA Forest Service, and they'll be handling the, the bill being paid. And I entertain any questions you might have.
Very well. Yes, Councilman Zagajanian.
I just, I want to ask, I mean, I'm glad that we have to pay only a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, and you guys did fantastic job. I'm just curious, when we say the sum of calculated shared costs for this fire was two million, three hundred and twenty-three thousand and six hundred and one dollars, what cost we are talking about?
The cost for that is the aircraft that was involved in the firefight. So when you look at a fixed-wing aircraft that's, that's dropping FOS check, that could be up to nine thousand dollars an hour. Mind you, we went through September first through September tenth on this firefight. Not, not every day did we have intense air resources, but that's where the money comes from. It's the salaries, it's the backfill in the fire stations, it's the equipment, it's the maintenance of the equipment. And so that's, that two-point-three million dollars was actually about ten million shy of what the total incident cost to run. When you have base camp, you have food that you have to feed the, the people, you have evacuation centers, the EOC, all those things play into it. And the total bill was about twelve million dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the air resources was just two-point-three million.
Oh, I was thinking that this would cost more than ten million dollars. That was a very big giant fire, I mean, for days. So that's why, that's why I was surprised, why it's two million, three hundred. Seems very small figure for that fire.
Yes.
So the cost was twelve million dollars or more.
Twelve million, a little over twelve million dollars. Again, this two-point-three is only representing the air resources that were assigned to the incident.
Thank you.
Very well, and where is this money going to come from?
It is going to come from our cash reserves.
The reserves.
The fund balance.
Fund balance, the fund balance that we, we have every year.
And how much reserve we have?
I'll get you an exact number, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, but it's about.
Over six hundred million dollars.
What? No, no, that is not the case.
Reserves that you can tap into for USIS, general reserves are about fifty million dollars.
Thank you. Where is this six hundred million coming from?
I'll get you a breakdown.
The entire money you have in the, invested and other matters.
Those are pensions.
This, yeah, we can't.
Touch that money, that's.
I'll move the item.
This city has money anyway. I second.
Thank you. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers, I'm sorry, was it a motion and a second? Thank you.
A second.
Councilmembers Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani?
Yes. Thank you, Chief. Your honor, yeah, welcome back. Item eight, eight C.
Wait, was there a card on that? Was there a card on that?
Oh, I'm sorry, there was, you know what, there was a card, I apologize. How do we handle this?
Motion reconsider. Motion reconsider in seconds, and we have to take both.
Okay, roll call, please. I apologize, Mr. Weber, where are you? Oh, there you are.
Councilmembers Zagajanian?
Yes, we're reconsidering.
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani?
Yes. Mr. Weber, welcome.
I am the city's ambassador for Brand Park.
How much time do you need?
Five minutes or less.
Five minutes.
I just want to let you know that I'm objecting to any payment to the city of Los Angeles. The fire, as the, the fire chief has explained, burned about four hundred and fifty acres of Glendale, far to the west of Brand Park. On September third, Labor Day Monday, the city of Los Angeles brought two bulldozers over to the slopes of Mount Tongva, the easternmost slope of the Verdugo Mountains, and drove those bulldozers into Brand Park, destroying a bench, destroying the library trail that runs from the Brand Park Library. They, the trail runs up to a place called Seven Trees Plateau. It actually has about thirteen trees. It has benches. They destroyed one of the benches with their bulldozers. They probably destroyed roots. I'm not an arborist, but they ran these bulldozers very close to some of those trees. Then they went on up almost to the top of Mount Tongva, ripping up the country, leaving the dirt so soft. The fire chief again talked about erosion. It actually exacerbated erosion. This damage was miles from where the La Tuna fire was. It was only four hundred and fifty acres into Glendale. That was far, far west of there. We've had to replace benches. The library trail is damaged beyond ever being restored to the condition it was in. It's just a wide swath that we, we, the city has paid to have a new trail built as best possible in that area. And so I'm only saying, because Brand Park can't speak for itself, I strongly object to the city of Los Angeles, to only the city of Los Angeles, being given any money for the vandalism that they have done to Brand Park.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weber. Staff? What happened?
I can have the fire chief come up and, and talk about exactly what happened, and this is the Seven Trees Trail behind Brand Park, which has been, it has been dealt with. The Community Services and Parks Department has replaced the bench, and the trails have been modified based on the damage that had occurred. But it was because of the fire, but I'll have the chief explain what LA City had done in that area.
Yes, so as Ms. Beer says, the, the reason why we have dozers going up and creating fire breaks is to stop the progression of the fire. And in tough times, when you're dealing with a very difficult fire like the La Tuna fire was, we have to make sure that these fire breaks are in place. And I don't think that there were too many fire breaks that were put in that were in excess of what we needed. I believe at the time that there, those were put in, those were calculated, and the reason why they were put into the Brand Park area is because even though there was four hundred and fifty acres far away from Brand Park in the city of Glendale, the city of Burbank lost a tremendous amount of acreage, as you can see inside the report. The city of Burbank lost sixteen hundred and fifteen acres, and that's, the, the forward progression of that fire was eventually going to get itself to Brand Park if we didn't, if the, if the weather didn't cooperate and we didn't have an outstanding firefighting force. With that said, you can't predict weather very precisely to know whether you're going to need that fire break or not. So as a result, we always go out there, create the fire break, and then we can always come back and rehabilitate, which is exactly what we did. Community Services and Parks, under the direction of One Bolanekian, did that. They, they replaced the benches, they rehabilitated, they put in water bars. So the threat of what we had previously right after the fire is no longer in place. It's, it's been slowly rehabilitated, and as we get more rain, it will eventually grow back. But that's the reason why we did that. Again, the, the amount of, if you, if you look at a neighborhood of houses that could possibly catch on fire, that is not even a question of whether we're going to risk that or not. That's, that's out of the question. The question is, is how can we stop the forward progression of this fire? And we built contingency lines, and that's what, exactly what those were.
Chief, of the hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, how much of, of that amount, how much is purely City of Los Angeles as opposed to USDA?
Uh, I believe the City of Los Angeles was like forty-three thousand dollars, I want to say, and the remainder was the US Forest Service.
So about a hundred thousand US forestry service and forty thousand City of Los Angeles.
That's correct.
So are you saying that the, the destruction that they caused, the bulldozers caused, were, was not wanton, it's, it wasn't just negligent?
Oh, no, it's, they're not just driving over, over land to drive over land and make it a, it's, it's, you know, the word vandalism was used. Their vandalism has an intent. The, the intention on the drivers of these dozers was to create a fire break to stop the forward progression of the fire as a, as a contingency line. That's all it was.
Destruction was actually part of the fire break?
There was some destruction in that fire break, yes, absolutely.
It means, so it was planned?
It was planned, oh, absolutely. Yeah, this was all planned during the fire. When the fire was burning at the same time, these dozers got out ahead and they create contingency lines to stop the forward progression.
Right, I mean, if this wasn't just sort of wanton and careless and negligent, I don't think there's an issue.
Not at all.
I mean, I, I'm.
This is common practice in almost every community across the nation that has wildland urban interface like we do. You're, you're going to see it in Yosemite at the Ferguson Fire right now. There are dozers cutting lines, taking trees out, making sure that the forward progression of that fire stops before it gets to the development. That's all it is.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion if my colleagues are ready.
I, I just, I have a question. What was the cost for the rehabilitation? Just out of curiosity, have any idea?
I, I do recall it being about forty thousand dollars.
Was it?
Yeah, when, I, I do remember that item. It was a night that I had an item on the, the agenda.
But when you weigh that against the houses that might have saved?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you, I'll second that motion.
There's no, no one's moved the item?
Yeah, I mean, the, the benches, I presume, time was of the essence, and by the time it would have taken to remove those benches and replace them, I mean, things could have gotten out of hand.
Absolutely.
I appreciate the speaker's comments.
I do, too.
And the displeasure with the actions, but I think it was, you know, in a time of crisis, it was necessary, so.
I'll move the item.
Thank you, and second. And may we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief. So you're back on again.
Back on again.
Yeah. Mr. Kasahian, you want to read eight C into the record?
Eight C is Fire Chief Regarding Proposed Fire Recruit Academy for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Nineteen. C one is a resolution appropriating eight hundred and three thousand, six hundred and sixty-six dollars.
So in this fiscal year, we, we had not predicted that we would have as many vacancies as we have accrued, mostly because of retirements, and there is a predicted resignation. There will be a person who's actually leaving the fire service altogether with very little time on the job. So that, that creates openings for us. We currently have enough openings to run a recruit academy for nine people. We'd like to commence the recruit academy starting in, on October second, and it is respectfully requested that we get the money to do that. It'll be a fourteen-week academy. This academy will be run with a state-certified ALA, which is an accredited local academy that which we are now considered, to, to train these individuals from the ground up. So we take nothing for granted, we give them not only the straight state training, but the Glendale way of how we deploy hose and, and throw ladders and fight fire.
Okay, questions?
And the money's coming from?
The reserves, the fund balance.
Okay, no questions. In a, I think in the future, if there's a way to anticipate the fire academy and budget for that, just to increase the level of certainty that we have in our budget, we may want to consider that.
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as, as you and I discussed earlier, and, and you came up with this question regarding why wasn't this budgeted? We just finished the budget process a couple of months ago, and a very good question. And as the chief said, you know, anticipating the number of retirees on an annual basis at times can be difficult, and at times is something that we can predict. But I think as a baseline threshold, just knowing each of the classes within the fire department and knowing within a timeframe, there are a number of retirements that will occur, we will do our best to include a portion of, or hopefully at times, the entire amount of recruit academies within the budget process that you see on an annual basis and, and vote upon, so that we don't have to have the appropriation from fund balance, the reserves, outside of that process. Now, if we don't budget enough, of course, we would be before you to ask you for that appropriation. If we budget too much, that amount, based on the fact that we would allocate it for fire recruit academies, would have to go back into the fund balance. So we will most definitely look to do that in the coming year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani?
Yes, thank you, Chief Fish. Next item, please.
Next item is Public Works Regarding Five-Year Purchase Order Contract with National Ready Mix Concrete Company, Inc., to provide various grades of ready mix concrete for maintenance and repair of city concrete hardscape. D one is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a purchase order contract in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, we'll go to Dan Hardgrove, Deputy Director of Public Works. Dan?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Dan Hardgrove. The, the, our Public Works Maintenance Services Department has its own transit mixer asset and operators that serve our concrete maintenance, repairs of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, drive aprons, concrete streets and alleys. Reliable source of ready mix concrete is, is a core, is a core material we use every single day in our operations. And it's, proximity is very important when, when utilizing this item, because it has essentially about a ninety-minute shelf life before it starts to set up. So when we go out to bid, we, we do look at vendors that are, are in close proximity to the city. For the past thirty years, we've had essentially the two vendors that have bid for, as the plants to supply this concrete. One is Robertson's Concrete in Pasadena, which is about twelve-point-three miles away. The other one is National Ready Mix, which is just in the city of Los Angeles, outside the city limits. It's about one-point-two miles away. These, both these vendors are typically very competitive, with only a few dollar difference on the unit prices they provide for ready mix concrete. And in the, when we've done our analysis, over the past four years, we found that Robertson's has been, has been the more successful in terms of the bids they've provided, saving the city about three thousand dollars annually, based on unit price alone. Now, the, the, the transit operator and the, and the equipment is, is critical, it's integral to the operations, and one thing that's not considered in our unit price bids is the operational costs to, to transport that, that material to the site and the services that the operator provides onsite. We've analyzed those costs based upon the distance of the two plants and found that the cost for, the burden of doing business with Robertson's is about sixteen thousand dollars more annually than that of National Ready Mix. So when you take into account the factor in the, the cost savings on the unit price, and then the operational cost to us, we actually are paying thirteen thousand dollars more by traveling that further distance with that, that vendor, even though they may have come in lower on the unit price bid. So with that in mind, we are seeking to dispense with competitive bids and provide a five-year purchase order contract with National Ready Mix to provide our, as our, as our service provider for concrete.
Okay, thank you, Hardgrove. Any questions, comments?
I'll move the item.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Karpetian?
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sonnani?
Yes, thank you. Next item.
He is Chief of Police Regarding Gun Buyback Event. He won his motion authorizing the police department to move forward with the planning of a gun buyback event, including the authority to accept funding from local businesses and nonprofits to offset costs.
Thank you. Chief, you'll be presenting this, and before you do that, let me make some comments, please. I asked for this item to be brought forth, and to be honest, at this point, I'm, I'm having difficulty rema, remembering which terrible gun violence incident prompted it, because we are constantly experiencing these. And just very recently, we, our neighboring city, the city of Los Angeles, Silver Lake to be specific, experienced a, a crime involving an armed hostage taker. And as a result of police action, the store manager, Melida Carrato, was killed by, unfortunately by a police bullet, a bullet released by police officers. So this brings forth once again the importance of eliminating as many of these firearms from the streets as possible. And I'm eager to hear your report, and I hope so are our residents and my colleagues.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Carl Politis, Chief of Police. I'm actually going to do a brief introduction, and then I'm going to let the, I'm going to let Lieutenant Danny Carver walk you through the presentation, since he did the walk you through the presentation, since he did the heavy lifting of actually doing the research and preparing the report. We certainly share your sentiments on the tragedy that occurred in Los Angeles, and I think it puts into, unfortunately, very sharp perspective, the difficult decisions that law enforcement officers have to make on a day-to-day, on a daily basis. It is a very, very challenging environment. Shifting gears here to what we're here, back in, on May 22nd, you had asked, and the council had asked us to come back with some information about a gun buyback program. So we are here tonight to walk you through what one of those programs would look like and to seek your direction on that, and so the work on how this would come together for the city of Glendale, should you like to move forward in that direction, was done by Lieutenant Carver. So let me have him walk you through the presentation, then we'll certainly be here to answer any questions.
Very well, thank you.
Mayor Sinanian, fellow City Council member, City staff, Lieutenant Danny Carver. In preparation for this report, I reached out to several law enforcement agencies, those that have hosted successful gun buyback programs themselves, one of those agencies, Los Angeles Police Department, and then two other agencies similar in size to Glendale, Santa Barbara, and Pasadena. And what I found in my research, I found some benefits of hosting the event, and also found potential drawbacks, but I'd like to share those with you and then kind of walk you through how the event would look if we hosted one in the city of Glendale, and then answer any questions that you might have. Do I have a clicker up here? You can use the mouse, or you can use the... There you go. So benefits of hosting the program, it's, the main benefit is removing unwanted firearms from the community, including those that could potentially fall into the wrong hands and be used in criminal activity or accidentally injure uninvolved parties because they're not properly secured. And what this means is, is if somebody has a gun in the home and their home happens to be broken into or burglarized and the gun stolen, then used in some other type of crime, or guns that are left unsecured throughout a house, are not secured properly, and some, a young child or an adolescent picks up the gun and uses it in some unintentional way, but accidentally injures somebody. And then, it's an easy solution for those that have handguns or rifles, but don't want them anymore and are not sure how to, how to dispose of those firearms in the appropriate manner. So it's an easy solution for those types of individuals. The main drawback that comes from running an operation like this is, if a gun was used in criminal activity, it could be destroyed, and we would not know that. And so that's the number-one drawback of the program. And I'll get into a little bit why this would occur in just a second here. So how it works, basically, for these events to be a success, they have to be completely anonymous, which means we ask no questions, there's no identifying information collected from participants, we don't collect license plates, we don't collect identification, driver's license, anything of that nature. The other agencies, LAPD has been doing this for a long time, and they've shown that the success rate is because of the nature of the program and that it's anonymous. The firearms would be destroyed, will be destroyed, no firearms will be kept, other than those that we run in the system and find that they're stolen, then we will return those firearms to the rightful owner. So, we do run the serial number, I'm sorry, the serial number on the firearms and return it to those that it rightfully belongs to. Otherwise, all firearms are destroyed. And another incentive in making the program a success is the use of gift cards. And so the gift cards are used to exchange for firearms, and this is kind of the going rate that agencies have found success with, a hundred dollars for handgun, shotguns, and rifles, and then two hundred dollar gift cards for assault rifles that meet the criteria of a California assault rifle. And those cards can come from a variety of vendors throughout the city, whether it's the Glendale Galleria, Target, or something of that nature. There's no limit to the number of guns that can be turned in by a participant, but we would limit the number of gift cards that would be given out. We would max that out at three gift cards per participant while supplies last. That way, we can accommodate more firearms being turned into the location. And we will not accept military ordinances or explosives, obviously, and, or ammunition.
Well, you'll accept them, but you will not reward for those, is that what you mean?
Well, we would like to avoid at all costs ordinances and explosives, because that would shut the entire event down.
Right.
We'd have to call the Sheriff's Department Bomb Squad, and if somebody happens to show up with ammunition, we're not gonna refuse taking it and destroying it. The best way for this event to be held is obviously in a large parking lot, with the city of Los Angeles and Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara uses a fairgrounds, which we don't have, but we have to keep it away from schools. One thought was Glendale Community College, a big parking lot, but because of the School Safety Act, we can't have guns in schools mixed together. So the event, the best date that has been successful for most agencies is Saturday, between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 1:00 p.m. It's a half-day event. And one of the best locations that we thought of, there could be potentially others, is in front of the old police station. We would shut down through traffic on Isabel Street, and we'd run two lanes of cars southbound on Isabel towards Broadway. And the way this works is firearms are removed from the trunk of the vehicle, so nobody gets out of their cars. The officers approach the cars, open the trunk up, inspect the firearms, and then decide whether or not they're functional firearms and whether or not they classify for some type of gift card. At that point, the car, they get a little receipt placed on the windshield of the vehicle, it moves up to the next station, gift cards are handed out, and off they go. So, that's how it works, and then we would store the firearms in a safe manner before they're destroyed. We would run the serial numbers, document them properly, and ultimately, we would melt them down with all the firearms. There is a financial impact to running an operation like this. Because it involves firearms, we wanna be as safe as we can possibly be, and it requires us to use firearm experts, some of our range staff, to manipulate, unload, and handle the firearms. Personnel cost is twelve thousand dollars for twelve sworn officers and ten professional staff. The professional staff will work on handing out gift cards, we'll use some cadets for traffic control, and then on the back end, our property persons and our records personnel have to run the guns, tag the guns, and then ultimately, transport them for destruction. And then the gift cards, we're looking at about twenty-two thousand dollars, and this allows for us to take in approximately a hundred and eighty guns and twenty assault rifles. And again, in speaking with the other cities, especially the ones of comparable size to us, they're taking anywhere from a hundred and eighty to two hundred guns in per event. LAPD, different story, they're taking in about a thousand to eleven hundred guns when they hold their events, for a total cost of thirty-four thousand dollars. And that is it. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Zagajanian?
Yes, you said when they bring the gun, we, they don't get off the car, and you inspect the gun. What do you mean by you inspect the gun, or whoever inspects the gun?
So the way this works is, we give gift cards for functional firearms. So we don't, if somebody just brings pieces, that doesn't count towards a gift card, or if they happen to bring a pellet gun or a BB gun. So what happens is, the trained firearms experts will go to the trunk of the car, they'll look at the guns in the car, they'll unload the firearms, because maybe they're loaded, we don't know. Some might be very old firearms that the owners don't even know how to unload, so we need to make sure that they're safe, render them safe, and then at that point, remove them from the car, put them aside to where we store them, and then move that person on to collect their gift cards. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And one more question, not that it's important. So we buy the gun, and you return it to rightful owner, right? The person who owned it before?
Only if the gun, only if it's a stolen firearm.
Yeah, so we don't get reimbursed, do we?
We don't buy them.
No.
No, but the rightful owner, we paid for him, and he's getting back. Not that it's important, but we are not getting money from the rightful owner.
Yeah, there's an exchange of a gift card for whoever anonymously returns that firearm in, and then at that point, if it's a stolen gun, it's our obligation to return it to its rightful owner, like we would any other piece of stolen property.
If I can just...
Go ahead.
Bear with me for one second.
Sure.
Do we have statistics as to what percentage of these returned guns are actually stolen guns that have to be returned to their rightful owners?
I do not have that statistic.
Does this say a large number?
It would be a small number.
It would be a small number, I would suspect as well. Ms. Devine?
Well, I just wanted to add to the excellent report, by the way, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That we had a healthy discussion about the gift cards when I had my briefing, and, but I want everybody to know that the gift cards will be purchased and hopefully donated from businesses here in the community, so that this money goes right back into our community. So that, that's another advantage, I think, to this program, a minor one, of course, but another.
And if I may add, Ms. Devine, that part of the program would be for us looking to partner with one of these major contributors to the city of Glendale, to see if we can potentially work out something that would benefit us.
Good luck with that, I hope it works.
Yes, yes, Mr. Najarian?
So I think, can you go back to your first slide? I mean, the advantage, when you talk about the advantages of this buyback. I think the best reason...
Sorry.
It's okay. So, I guess the best reasons are, it would remove the unwanted firearms from those that inherited them or found them, or, you know, Uncle Joe passed away and they found this. I think it, you know, would prevent accidental shootings from folks that don't know how to use guns or how to care for them and wanna get rid of them. I'm not sure it would, it would have prevented a Trader Joe's incident.
Well, there was another incident this weekend where the four-year-old killed a two-year-old.
Because that's, that's different, that's where, you know, it falls into the wrong hands, or the parents don't know what to do. I'm a gun owner, I won't tell you how many guns I have, or what caliber they are. I will use those guns to defend myself or to defend my family. So, I just want everyone to know that that's where I stand on gun ownership, and I believe I'm a responsible owner, I have the appropriate mechanisms to keep those safe out of the hands of those that I don't want to have those guns. And that's my comment, though.
Okay, Mr. Najarian. Now, with respect to Trader Joe's, we don't know, do we know that the hostage taker had a firearm that he otherwise would not have had?
We don't know.
So, I mean, we don't know if it was, it would have prevented it, we don't know if it would not have prevented it, but I think just getting guns out of circulation, as many guns as we get out of circulation, the better we are as society, it's just safer. I mean, it's less means, less tools to harm and kill human beings, I think it's just general law. I wanna, also, I wanna make sure that I express condolences to the family of the clerk that was, that's actually the store manager, Ms. Melida Carrato, and to her family for her loss. I'm sure the police officer who discharged that firearm must be devastated, you know, so that must be a very tough thing. You, you police officers would know better as to how that would get treated.
The situation is tragic, it's extremely difficult, as I mentioned before, it, I think it puts into focus the difficult decisions police officers have to make, and I don't know if anybody saw Chief Smores' press conference this morning, but I think you kind of get a sense of that. And I can tell you that any officer involved in an officer-involved shooting, that is not an easy decision for them to make, and it's an emotional, it's an emotional event for them also, and many times, they are devastated, because that's not, you know, although we know that's part of this profession and it's something that we might be asked upon to do, it's not something that we ever hope to do.
Of course.
And sometimes, it just becomes necessary.
Of course, thank you, Chief. We do have a speaker card on the side, I'm Tony Passarella.
Okay, oh, he's here.
Is Tony here?
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Mayor Sinanian, Councilmember's staff, hearing public, Tony Passarella. This was a Parkland, that's what instigated this, your emotional reaction to the Parkland shooting, by the way. It's a complete waste of time, complete waste of resources. History proves that, this is, you know, you're gonna get a bunch of guns that don't work, you're not gonna get any assault weapons, you got, what was it, twelve police, uniform police, thirty-four thousand dollars, while they can be doing their police work, they're gonna be, you know, buying back a bunch of junk. This is, guns aren't the problem, I mean, this man's got a gun, all these police officers got a gun, right? And who knows, I mean, you might say, oh, if we, just if one gun gets turned in that would have killed somebody, it was a success. How bad if one of those guns would have saved the life of somebody who was breaking into a home? It doesn't work, it's a complete waste of time, waste of resources, and as a result, another emotional reaction from a very local situation, the Silverlake thing, Mr. Kasazian puts it in his prayer about gun violence. Guns aren't the problem. Guns aren't the problem. I mean, when are we gonna get that through our heads? We don't talk about the knife violence, the violence against children, fists are used for violence, baseball bats, I mean, on and on and on and on. Guns aren't the problem. He wouldn't have a gun, they wouldn't have a gun if guns were the problem. It's not gonna work, it's a waste of time and resources. I know how this is gonna go, I'm not naive, but I just wanna voice my opinion.
Good for you.
You're gonna get a bunch of, you know, stuff they're gonna be going through, if you get one assault rifle, I would be very surprised. Matter of fact, I'll probably show up and see if I can, you know, check this event out. I don't know, it just, it just amazes me that, I think it was a knee-jerk reaction on your part, honestly, Mrs. Sinanian. Anyway, you're entitled to that, but it's not gonna work, it's no good. History proves that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kasazian, if you call for a vote?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, I just wanna say that, Mr. Passarella, if you're gonna invoke any of my words, at least pronounce my name correctly, I've only been at this post for fourteen years now, and I chalk it up to being nervous and speaking publicly, but I know you've spoken at this podium many a time, so you were anything but nervous. So, it's pronounced Kasakian, or you may have gotten confused with someone else.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the item.
Second. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Zagajanian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Sinanian?
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item was a public hearing, which we moved up to the front of the agenda, it was approved, there are no other items, and the next item is oral communication.
Oral communication.
Where discussion is limited to items not part of this agenda, each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See Madam Mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for an investigation and report.
Okay, thank you. We have a, two cards, first speaker Stephen Weber, followed by Sonia Hakim.
Your name is Mayor, members of the council. Again, let me introduce myself, I'm Stephen Weber, I'm the ambassador appointed by the city for Brand Park. I came in here about six months ago and discussed the very poor condition of some of the restrooms. I wanna thank you, almost immediately, some action was taken, and the, at least the urinals in the men's room looked very good. The toilet seat in the men's room in one of the restrooms still has not been replaced. Yasmin Beers indicated that perhaps it never did have a seat on it, but it actually did, and all the other toilets have seats on them, so that one has not been taken care of. But, everything else is, and that's a great improvement. The main reason I came here today was to discuss the formerly abandoned picnic area that's been renovated, and I have some pictures here, I wanna make sure I give you the right batch, there should be five of them here. About two years ago, when Hall of Devine was mayor, we had a meeting with Herr and Oneg Bolanikian, I have to write this out to make sure I try to get his name correct, discussing the very poor condition of this area that was directly adjacent to Brand Park Library. The city has spent a lot of money putting in a new sprinkler system, planting grass and getting it to grow, it actually looks better than it does in this picture right here, pouring concrete slabs for picnic benches, and putting in picnic tables and benches, you can see one in the front picture, off right to the side of the light pole, and then just benches for people to sit on. The problem is, as you can see here, I kinda call this picture, "Welcome to your park, now get out of here." So there's no stopping at any time. If you look on the second page, the curbs are painted red, all of them, on both sides, you can't see it too well in these pictures, and if you look at the last picture, the gate is locked on page three at the top, so people can't get in there. Now, the city spent a lot of money on this park, gotten it looking pretty good, and you can't use it. You can't park your car next to it, you can't go into the parking area, you can't even stop. I've talked to both Coco... talked to both Coco Panosian and Mr. Bolanikian, and they said they're working on it. They seem to feel there's a problem at night, but if you look here, there are about a dozen or more lamps, lights in that area. The city has spent a lot of money, again, in the last year, putting these in. So I only come to you because I am getting a little troubled by the delay in making this park available to the public, now that the city has spent so much money renovating it. On the last page, page three, and I put some numbers up in the right corner, the other concern I have is some of the lamps we got, that have been in for a year or less, have severe corrosion. Now, the picture I've given you, just to be fair, is one of the worst of the roughly 90 or so lamps that were put in. The other ones are showing similar corrosion. I don't think the city's getting what they've paid for when they get lamps that are corroded as badly as this one. This particular one is right by the baseball fields. The other thing I want to make a correction on, just so it's clear, I took these pictures about a month ago. These trash containers that you see on these pictures, and there are several scattered around, are no longer there. The city has gone and spent money again on this, in this renovated area, on very nice concrete trash containers that have lids that apparently keep the animals out. But unfortunately, they've only done it in this area that you can't use. The rest of the park, these trash barrels look just like they're depicted, and that last picture down in the bottom right-hand corner of page three is a trash barrel in another part of the park. I don't want to take any more time. I, I just want to let you know that I would like to see a little action on this. The city has got a great opportunity here. The summer is well underway. The park is jammed on weekends. Maybe putting up some signs indicating this area is available, and unlocking that gate will make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. Sonia Hakim?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm a resident of Glendale since 1989. I used to hang out here when I was a little girl, in my teens. I'm 66. I always wanted to live in Glendale. I used to hang out here when there were only two tall buildings, the Alex Theater and Glendale Federal Savings. Outside of that, everything was down. I have seen how it has changed dramatically. Some things positive, some things negative, okay? And insofar as the rents are concerned, yeah, they've been going up considerably. As you can see, I'm disabled, and I wish I could work. I really wish. I could do everything I could have done since before 2011, but that's not the case. So my income has been dramatically influenced because of my lack of earning $50,000 as a legal secretary, previous to certain incidents. And my partner and I, she doesn't earn that much money, so we're trying to make ends meet, and we can't. We would like to. We wanted to save money so that we could buy a house. That is not materializing either. And we're being faced eventually, very shortly, because we've heard other tenants mention that their rent has been raised. We're struggling to pay $1,800 a month. I know our landlord raised the rent of one of our tenants, or a few of them, to $2,000. So no savings, no other recourse, and I don't know what to do, really. I'm very, very worried. And I would like to stay in this city. Hey, I made it my home. I love it, okay? And it's sad that I will have to face the situation of, I don't even know, an example, I contacted HUD Housing, but if you don't have money, that's not going to work. If you want to get into a, you know, affordable housing, you have to be on the list, and the lists have been closed, okay? So if you can't get on the list, and you can't afford, have money to move, then what? That's the quandary that I'm dealing with. And I don't even know what to do, to tell you the truth, okay? And I'm asking all of you to please, please see it from our side. I understand you have a certain budget that you have to deal with. I'm not ignoring that fact. But for those of us that either are much more older than I, and more disabled than I, and we have to move, I really don't know what I'm going to do. I'm not sleeping well, and that affects my heart. So I don't know what to do. Changing the subject, when Mr. Tony was talking about the traffic, I live on Pacific and Oak, which is close to Colorado. Believe me, I could just forget about using my TV, and just sit on my, on my balcony and watch what's going on all day long, okay? You have expensive cars, car owners who want to show everybody, hey, I got an expensive car, so I'm going to go real fast. Doesn't matter what you think. Making all kinds of noise, okay? It's terrible. Within the last month, we have seen three accidents happen. There was one yesterday, you know? And I know our police force can't be everywhere. I understand that, believe me. I understand that. But if they did something, if they put cameras, or had motorcycle cops in that area, they'll make some more money. And I know that. Because oftentimes, I've been woken up in the middle of the night of a, because of a car passing by my window, okay? I'm sorry. And making so much noise that it wakes me up, even though I can't get much sleep. So please, take all this into consideration. I am a voting citizen, and I do vote. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hakim. And that's the last speaking card that we have. We need to recommence our closed session meeting?
Correct. Typically, we do that now, under new business.
Okay, so we're back from closed session. Do we have anything to report from closed session items?
No, Mr. Mayor, there's nothing to report out today.
So do we need to adjourn the general meeting, or a closed session first, then general meeting? Just general meeting, right?
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
And we're adjourned at 7:58 PM. Thank you, everyone.